Everyone, and welcome to the Special Arts Parks and River Committee Hearing, held in this room today as opposed to the other room where a lot of us went to. So I apologize for any misunderstanding, but this is a special hearing. And with that, Mr. Sutton Willis, will you please read the first item? But like, before you do that, I'm sorry, I'd like to welcome Bob Blumenfield and David Rue. We have quorum, and let's begin the meeting. Item one.
Item one, Department of Recreation and Parks Report Relative to the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 21151(c), Appeal of the Initial Study Mitigated Negative Declaration Case Number NG15539RP for the Griffith Park Observatory Circulation and Parking Enhancement Plan filed by the Committee to Save the Hollywood Land Specific Plan, Homeowners on Beechwood Drive United, the Hollywood Land Gifted Park, Hollywood Land Homeowners Association, and John Schwartz.
Thank you. Item one is a sequoia fair hearing appeal, and I'd like to have our city attorney, Striff Onfabel, go over the details of and provide some guidance on exactly what we can expect from this appeal hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have two appellants. I propose that the procedure is first we hear from each appellant's representative at five minutes each. If they want to divide that time internally so that more than one person can speak, that's fine. Then we'll go through the public speaker cards, following normal procedures, in a minute each. So there'll be ten minutes for the appellants, and then the department will have ten minutes itself, and it also can divide the time among its speakers as it sees fit. As you commented, it's a fair hearing item, so the council members should pay close attention to the appellants when they're giving their testimony.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, I'm going to close the public comment on this, on item one. It is officially closed since this hearing is now beginning, and I'd like the appellants to please step forward then and prepare to make your case. Who do we have to do that? Are we stepping to appellants?
There are two.
Good afternoon. And I'm just going to pause for just a second. There are interruptions in the chamber that are annoying already and distracting for everyone. They're coming from a Mr. Herman, and I'm going to insist that we listen and not make sounds like a sheep or a goat or whatever it is you're doing. So that's your first warning. Two more, and you're out of here. All right, appellants, please, please begin. Thank you, and sorry for the disruption.
Hi there, I'm Crosby Doe, and here representing the Committee to Save the Hollywood Land Specific Plan, also a Hollywood Land resident for over thirty years, and also importantly, I have owned property there in Hollywood Land within ten steps across the street of Griffith Park for all of that time. And in that time, I've been able to see at the corner of Canyon Lake and Mulholland Highway some radical changes that weren't planned for by Griffith Park and unfortunately by the previous administration, I believe mistakes were made that have complicated the whole situation with the current negative declaration. I'm not here to say that that one neighborhood should be favored over another. We're not looking for that at all. When I met with Councilman Rue early on, after his election, he had mentioned clearly that everybody's going to need to make concessions. We're all going to have to live with the results. And quite frankly, this EIR started out very, very effectively trying to look at that, and when we had the Mount Hollywood view site opened up, which considerably mitigated the situations at Canyon Lake and Mulholland Highway at the time. Unfortunately, that caused a great deal of pushback, as you probably all know, with bicycle riders, other park users, Los Feliz residents. And what we're here for today, quite frankly, is merely to say, this is an opportunity, rather than to look at one small segment of the problem, and I'm glad that you do, but to look at the whole overall ingress egress of Griffith Park and resolve the critical problems throughout the park in one step. Quite frankly, if you approve the negative deck as it is, unfortunately, any action of that on the east side of the park is significantly going to affect the west side of the park. And I just am afraid that we could much better be served with an EIR that resolves the parking and circulation for the whole park. And I thank you for my time. I'm now going to turn this over to Mr. Carstens, our attorney.
Thank you, sir.
Honorable council members, good afternoon. My name is Doug Carstens. I'm an attorney with Chatten Brown &amp; Carstens, and we've represented the Committee to Save the Hollywood Land Specific Plan for a number of years. I mean, this is an organization that is very desirous of protecting the integrity of the Hollywood Land area, starting with the historic walls when we were involved years ago, but now very concerned about essentially out-of-control access. Now, we support access and enjoyment of everybody, but we ask for regulation. We ask for control, and when an action is taken, such as on the southeastern part with the circulation, et cetera, we are asking that the southwestern part of the park be as comprehensively considered as well, all at the same time, because the effect of creating controls in one location but not the other is to push unregulated visitation into the southwestern area and the Hollywood Land area, et cetera. So it is possible to approve this project, but only after sufficient environmental impact review, a full EIR report. Advantage of an EIR, the full EIR report, would be to look at alternatives, alternative parking locations, alternative access controls, alternative view sites, because it is a recognized fact that this is a very popular area to view the Hollywood sign. It's world famous, and there are ways to allow everybody to enjoy it, but that needs to be fully analyzed, rather than in a negative declaration, which essentially cuts the public review and involvement. It cuts it short. You see, obviously, people are very interested in this, and I think a full environmental impact report process would allow vetting and airing of all concerned parties' points of view and be able to achieve something that actually does not have to pick winners and losers, but could help everybody protect their interests. So we are asking that a full environmental impact report be done, that the current unofficial view site be dismantled while that's occurring, and approval can still be done, but on the basis of a full environmental impact report. I thank you for your time and would be available for questions.
Thank you. And has that been ten minutes?
Five minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
Per appellant, there are two.
Okay, all right. And so...
You're one appellant.
So you're one. Okay, thank you so much, then, and we have the other appellant then?
Do we? I think we might, but we may not, but I don't need to take another five minutes.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, so we're going to hear some other things if they come into the room, then, before we have, you know, before we finish public comment on item one, and before, or as Wreckin' Parks does their presentation, if they come in in these next ten minutes or so, then we'll still bring them up. Okay? Sure. Thank you so much. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and take some public comment, then, having said that, and we'll see if the other appellants come in in the meantime. And we're going to, there are a lot of comment cards here, so we're going to limit it to one minute each, and let's start, and please come up in threes. We have Mary Burton, Jerry Hans, and Sheila Irani will be the first three.
I'm sorry, councilmember, the other appellant is here.
Oh, he is here.
I was not aware that she'd like to speak right now, but is that okay if she were...
Yeah, that was kind of the plan, anyway. My apologies, that was kind of the plan. Okay, I'm hearing the second interruption from Mr. Herman, distracting the meeting. That's two.
Thank you. The first draft of this, I'm Sarah Jane Schwartz from Homeowners on Beechwood Drive United. The first draft of this plan stated as one of its goals, reducing traffic and congestion in Hollywood Land. The final draft has removed this purpose. The city instead pretends that their proposing near the Griffith Park Observatory will have no impact on our neighborhood. This is counter to what they have stated and to what we have and will experience. The continuing unlawful pattern of exempting the impact of tourism and the sign in Hollywood Land from any public process or examination continues. Every other neighborhood is protected with legal public hearings and plans, while we are stripped of our protections in basic due process. The results of this are evident in the dangerous chaos. This is a safety issue, and this should take precedent over everything. This plan will only make it worse. The city must include in its study the impact of their plans concerning the eastern viewing of the sign on our western area of Griffith Park, which they have removed. At the very least, we want them to follow the law. Even better, however, would be for the city to finally include, for the first time, all of the areas in the western side of Griffith Park involved with the sign in an actual plan, not just the impacts, that will have public review and participation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, all right. Well, so we'll go to the public comment, and again, we'll have Mary Burton, Jerry Hans, and Sheila Irani, the first three.
My name is Mary Button. I support immediate implementation of the traffic plan, no matter what the status is of the appeal. The traffic plan is long overdue and cannot be further delayed. It is an issue of public safety. The current situation of no plan in place is untenable and dangerous. It is a nightmare for both vehicles and pedestrians and cyclists. The traffic plan will benefit the park, both its users and the habitat. Importantly, it will reduce the number of cars and encourage the use of the dash to get to the observatory. This plan must move forward without further delay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Jerry Hans. I'm president of Friends of Griffith Park. We offer no opinions on the credibility of the appeals, but feel the project must go forward with urgency. We have previously voiced our support for the circulation plan and continue to do so. Of course, the project will not solve all issues, but it is an important first step. I point this out since, as you can see from the photos, the habitat is being decimated on any busy visitor day. Those are not trails, and this is new. During the sequel process, we were told physical project improvements are confined to the existing roadways and shoulders, and the project would not directly affect the habitat. We understand that. But we also want you to understand that these habitat areas are being highly impacted. They contain some very special flora species. The traffic plan is a good start, but Joe and Tracy need a lot more additional resources and help sent their direction to control what has become an off-trail free-for-all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Before Ms. Irani begins, the next three speakers are going to be Marion Dodge, Chris Labe, and Shona Gunguli will be the next three speakers.
I'm actually speaking on the next slide.
Oh, you are. Somehow got mixed into the wrong.
I have a slide.
Oh, no worries, we're good. Then, in that case, it will be Carstens, P. Carstens, and I, sorry, I cannot read the first name.
Good afternoon, I'm Sheila Irani, seven-term president of Lake Hollywood Homeowners Association and the Public Safety Works and Transportation Chair of Hollywood United Neighborhood Council. I'm a resident of Hollywood Hills now for fifty-four years, and I have Hunk's letter of support for submission. The health of Griffith Park depends on reducing congestion. I'm here representing LHHA and Hunk in their full support of the Griffith Observatory Circulation and Parking Enhancement Plan. My career serving multiple major metropolitan areas throughout the United States as a transportation consultant and an urban economist gives me the confidence that paid parking and a low-cost shuttle will reduce the congestion that robs visitors of access to the observatory and forces congestion onto the residential sections near the Hollywood signs, such as Lake Hollywood Estates. An EIR is not necessary or required for the adoption of the circulation plan and the health and safety of Griffith Park, and our area is incumbent on adoption of the circulation plan. Hollywood Land has reaped the benefits of an electronic gate, twenty-four-hour security, and preferred parking. Lake Hollywood needs the benefits of this circulation plan. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So Marion Dodge, Chris Labe, and I think it's Douglas Carstens, my apologies.
Good afternoon, I'm Marion Dodge, vice president of Friends of Griffith Park. First, Friends would like to thank the department for their tremendous efforts to address the complicated issue of traffic congestion in Griffith Park. Friends would especially like to give a shout-out to Griffith Superintendent Joe Solisis and his assistant Tracy James for all the time they've spent meeting with the public. Friends appreciates the decision to keep the interior roads closed to vehicular traffic. This continued closure will go a long way toward minimizing the impact on the fragile native environment of the park. The closed roads also provide many passive recreational opportunities for hikers, bikers, dog walkers, and baby strollers. Increasing public access to the park with dash shuttles and free shuttle service from the Greek Theater will encourage people to take advantage of convenient way to get to the park and skip the hassle of looking for a parking space. This is not a problem that's going to be easily solved. The plan will evolve and hopefully include additional mitigations to control heavy traffic, and Friends looks forward to continue working with the department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chris Labe, immediate past president of the Los Feliz Improvement Association. I'm going to read the official position of the Los Feliz Improvement Association, which represents thousands of residents in the Los Feliz district. We commend the department for their efforts to mitigate the traffic congestion on the south side of Griffith Park. The redirection of Hollywood sign tourism traffic to Griffith Observatory, in addition to increased volume at the Greek Theater, have rendered many of our residential and connecting mountain roads often impassable. Several hundred residents rely on these arteries for ingress and egress, and the narrow-winding streets have finite capacity limits, particularly as they proceed in and out of this side of the park. Also, the severe impact of traffic on Los Feliz Boulevard, a major east-west commuting street, requires additional mitigation. The department's thorough vetting of various alternatives and appropriate public involvement have produced a comprehensive plan, and we are appreciative of the public outreach to our organization in particular. While not a strategic solution for the increased burden on the park and its adjacent residents, until such time a more equitable distribution plan for the Hollywood sign can be implemented, we help you support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So we have Douglas P. Carstens, Zachary Reineer, and Don Ward.
Councilmember, I've spoken.
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry about that. Yep, you're right here, thank you. And then, in that case, it'll be Sean Meredith.
Hello, my name is Zachary Reineer. I'm representing the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition. We support the Griffith Park Observatory Circulation and Parking Enhancement Plan. In particular, we know that this, the section of Mount Hollywood Drive is one of the few places where people can bike and hike along with equestrians and find solace in the city. Opening up the car, the opening of the road to cars can create a dangerous mix for users. LA CVC supports access to parks and open space, and adding motorized traffic to this area makes this area less accessible to people biking and walking and its local residents, as we had seen earlier in the pilot program.
Thank you. Don Ward.
My name is Don Ward. I'm organizer of Keep Griffith Wild, which is a group that has produced almost two thousand signatures for this specific plan, and we've been focused on this issue for two years now. I just want to point out that this plan actually does take into consideration Beechwood, because the fact is, is that the only access to the Hollywood sign at this point for tourists and anybody is via an automobile. And what this plan does is it actually excellently incentivizes the use of the dash bus to get to the Hollywood sign from the red line, which is, you know, the red line is the main tourist point of access in Los Angeles, one could argue. I mean, when you visit other cities, you're using the subways, you're using public transportation. This plan provides seven-day-a-week public transportation to the Hollywood sign. That takes care of the Beechwood folks in a way that has not been done before, so I urge you to reject the appeal and move forward with the plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sean Meredith. As someone who has lived in Lake Hollywood, I have a lot of sympathy for what Beechwood and Lake Hollywood are going through in these last ten years as traffic has increased. But I live in Los Feliz, and I can see that what's desperately needed is a traffic plan, and I think that this limited dash that has been going into Griffith Park for the last few years just can't, it's not reliable, and no one can know when to take it. It's on the weekends, and so tourists, it's nothing, and it's not, not a lot of people know about it. So having a real plan that has a regular dash that people can rely on will definitely change the traffic patterns, where people can just think, we get on the red line, we can take the dash, as opposed to like, is it a Saturday? It's a holiday, does a dash, is it different? So it's just really confusing for people. I think the traffic plan is desperately needed, we all know. So I'm really looking forward to seeing this plan implemented and fixing things we go along the way, and hopefully less cars in Griffith. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Crosby Doe, J.J. Blair, and Sarah Jane Schwartz.
Crosby, Sarah.
Oh.
They're without comments.
Oh, okay. You fill out this card, okay. So Sarah Jane, you're there. Crosby, you're there. So we have J.J. Blair, and then Christine O'Brien.
Can I add my name?
No, you, well, you are an appellant, and you already spoke. Yeah, so.
Ladies first.
Christine O'Brien, Hollywood Land property owner and educator of the Hollywood Land Gifted Park. I support the appeal of the Committee to Save the Hollywood Land Specific Plan. An objective of the 2015 MND document was to include Hollywood Land, and that's on page seven of this document, and that's been taken out. By ignoring this objective, the circulation plan is incomplete, and it's ineffective. With this proposal, the eastern side of the park is projected to reduce traffic by forty-three percent, and that's due to your parking, your parking fees, limited parking, and what happens? All that comes to the west side. We don't have that. We will get a domino effect from this. Without a comprehensive plan, you cannot solve the traffic issues. Please support the appeal and reinstate the original objective. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's J.J. Blair. I am a member of the Hollywood Homeowners Association, and I am representing the thousands of residents of Hollywood Land, as well as the thousands of hikers that we have. We have infrastructure that, traffic and pedestrian infrastructure that was created in 1923, that does not have the bandwidth to accommodate the thousands of people who will continue to seek free access as opposed to paid access, that is information readily available on the internet. I am concerned about the bikers and the local fauna, but I'm also concerned about the safety of my friends who have, who push strollers around on weekends and have to contend with, you know, lost tourists and people just, and pedestrians who are clogging up the streets. We were initially included in the study. I would like for us to be re-included, and I want to point out that the scenic view, which was part of the problem, was done without an EIR. So I'd like to make sure that we have an EIR before we go forward with this.
Thank you. Thank you. That is all the cards that I have specifically for item one that have been filled out. All right, so, thank you. And what we'll do, you submitted a card for item two.
One, two, one, I put two cards and served no public comment, special four.
Okay, you're not...
There it is.
You submitted a card for item two.
One and two.
You submitted one card for item two, and that's what you'll speak on. Now we'll have a presentation, okay? Are you going to interrupt the meeting again? Is that what you're doing? Thank you. We'll now have a presentation from Recreation and Parks Department. Okay, that's your last warning, Mr. Herman. That's it.
Good afternoon, honorable committee members, staff, and members of the public. My name is Joe Solisis, and I am the superintendent for Griffith Park. I've been working for the department for thirty-eight years now, and I have the great pleasure and privilege of being the superintendent for the last three or four years overseeing every item that happens in Griffith Park. Sitting next to me is Dan Guera of Amick Foster &amp; Wheeler. Dan is a consultant who assisted us with developing the MND. Several years ago, after witnessing the huge amounts of cars jamming up into the interior roads in and around the Griffith Observatory, it became very apparent that something had to be done to improve the public safety and customer service of the crowds visiting the Griffith Observatory, viewing the Hollywood sign, and hiking the park's trail system. What I would like to share with you today is the positive impact that the Griffith Observatory Circulation and Parking Enhancement Plan will have on the thousands of Angelenos, tourists, and local visitors that come to enjoy beautiful Griffith Park every day. There are three main components to the plan: improving the flow of traffic by changing the striping pattern of the loop around the Griffith Observatory to a one-way; installing paid parking kiosks that are solar-powered and do not require infrastructure; to East and West Observatory Road and the main parking lot along Western Canyon; and expanding dash service to the observatory from weekends only to seven days per week. These changes will improve the customer experience and underscores the need to provide a multimodal transit alternative to alleviate the traffic issues and improve safety. Recreation and Parks staff has been working closely with our partners at MTA and LADOT to enhance and expand transportation services to the Griffith Observatory. MTA has branded the Sunset Vermont Red Line Station as the go-to stop to visit the Griffith Observatory, Greek Theater, and Griffith Park. A region-wide marketing campaign is underway that will reach out to locals and tourists alike. The plan provides alternatives for tourists that do not exist today. We want tourists to know the best way to visit the park without needing to bring a rental car, by having the ability to plan on using public transportation before they visit Los Angeles. We are working closely with our local tourist agencies and hotel concierge to reach out to tourists planning a trip to Los Angeles. Expanding dash service from two days to seven days a week is not only good for tourists, but provides social equity to those Angelenos that cannot afford or choose not to own a car. It is a shame that car-free Angelenos are limited to two days a week that they can visit the Griffith Observatory. This plan commits service every day for everyone. The revenues that are collected from the pay stations will help to subsidize the seven-day-a-week service. Dash has committed to two buses on the route, all day, every day, with expanded service during Greek Theater concert nights. Visitors who do not want to pay to park can park at the Greek Theater and along Vermont Avenue and ride the dash bus, or walk to the grounds of the observatory. The first phase of the traffic plan is the beginning of several phases that will concentrate on continuous improvements towards safety and providing excellent customer service. The second phase, which we have begun work on, is to provide a free hop-on, hop-off electric shuttle that will operate throughout Griffith Park to all its amenities. The park-wide shuttle is in the spirit of the National Park System and other municipalities throughout the United States. Neighborhood vehicle traffic will be reduced by providing tourists a better option to use public transportation. The traffic plan is consistent with Mayor Garcetti's LA plan for sustainability on several fronts, including improving public mobility through transit, providing all people with access to parks and open space, and reducing carbon footprint by reducing automobile use and the use of solar power. We must start somewhere. This plan is a win-win for everyone. It is the right thing to do. The traffic plan has been well-vetted by the public. Local neighborhood councils, homeowners associations, and special interest groups participated, and several city departments, including the Los Angeles Fire Department and Council District Four, support the plan. The appellants will argue that they have been left out of the process because the MND does not include a Hollywood sign view area, and Mount Hollywood Drive remains a car- and shuttle-free road. However, the result from transparency and inclusion of open and robust public comment resulted in simply narrowing the scope of the MND prior to department approval. Other appellate comments, such as installing facility welcome signs at Lake Hollywood Park and photos of traffic snarls that the area has pre-existed the development of this MND. The staff report you have before you is asking to deny the appeal request and to approve the actions of the September 9, 2016, meeting of the Recreation and Parks Board of Commissioners. It is thorough and complete, but to describe the process of the MND and its contents, I would like to ask Dan here to address the committee and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Honorable council members, Dan Giroff from Amick Foster Wheeler. By way of introduction, I have more than thirty years of experience in environmental impact analysis, both in the public sector and the private sector. I prepared or managed preparation of over fifty environmental impact reports. I don't know or remember how many mitigated negative declarations, maybe fifty to a hundred, dozens of traffic studies, regional traffic models, parking studies, transportation improvement plans, et cetera. So I have a fair amount of experience with traffic management. I'm here to address the appellant's concerns about the negative declaration, as set forth some of the responses in the November 21 staff report, which is in the record. some of the responses in the November 21 staff report, which is in the record. I think it's important that the councilmembers understand the environmental baseline is really important. We start from what's happening now. And what's happening now in Griffith Park is frequent road closures due to congestion such as many as 10 to 12 a day, diverting people away from the park to other areas to potentially view the Hollywood sign, a scramble for parking in the upper areas which leads to gridlock and congestion, and unavailability of parking to park visitors, again diverting people away from the park or to other areas of the park. That's the environmental baseline in the park. The environmental baseline in Hollywood Land are, exist of concerns over congestion and people trying to access the park, similar but maybe less intense issues. So we started our analysis based on the environmental baseline. So the project, as Joe indicated, there's some good parking management proposals that are set forth. And right now, parking management and especially fee parking is viewed as pretty key to managing traffic congestion in the professional world, largely due to turnover. There are low-cost transit proposals, also viewed as key in the professional world to managing congestion in our increasingly crowded Southern California area. And then there are limited circulation changes. To just touch briefly upon the findings of the mitigated negative declaration and the technical traffic analysis prepared by I-Terras, the key finding here is increased parking turnover in the upper elevations of the park due to implementation of a fee program. Numerous studies have found that fees facilitate turnover of parking spaces, thereby facilitating repeated visits to the upper elevations of the park, which are just not available now based on all the evidence we've seen. So more parking spaces will be available in the upper elevation of the park. I-Terras in their traffic study found this would reduce, and various change, would reduce at least 30 cars per hour on park roads. Decreased congestion was found to be an outcome of this program, both in the mitigated negative declaration and the traffic study, as well as diversion of traffic away to the west from Western Canyon Road. And so, sort of by obviating the contention, that traffic would increase in Hollywood Land. In terms of specific concerns raised by the appellants, I'd like to note that the, there's no substantial evidence in the record that has been supported by the appellants that there's a fair argument for significant effect. Your council has before you a substantial body of evidence in the traffic analysis and the mitigated negative declarations argue against significant effect-related traffic. So there is no evidence in our analysis been submitted by the appellants that support the contentions. And again, to reiterate briefly, the findings of the ND and the traffic study in relation to the concerns raised, no increases in traffic volumes west of, Western Canyon Road were found in the technical traffic report. Improved parking turnover, increased viewing opportunities or park visitation opportunities in upper elevations were found by the technical traffic analysis in the negative declaration. Improved transit and decreased congestion in the park, and the real potential for decreased road closures. All those argue against diversion of traffic out of the park to other areas, rather allowing the park to accommodate increased visitation through the combination of improved parking management and improved transit. And I'm available for any questions.
Terrific. Thank you, gentlemen. Anything else to add, Mr. Silesis? No? So at this time, so Griffith Park is, of course, it's a, it's a treasured landmark in all of Los Angeles since it's a regional draw and with regional implications, but it is solely within the boundaries of Council District Four. And so at this time, I'd like to turn this portion of the hearing over to our colleague, Mr. David Rue, who will take over the, lead the questioning and the, make the recommendations. Mr. Rue.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if Councilman Blumenfield has any questions before I make, I'd like to do closing if the councilmember has any questions.
Do we have any questions or concerns?
Chair, I mean, most of my questions have been answered very well in this discussion. Just a couple of things. I mean, a minor point, but the money for the paid parking, where is that going and how is that influencing the overall?
So the revenues that are collected will go to subsidize Dash portions of that and also be spent to revitalize Griffith Park and to be used toward improving safety and traffic flow throughout the park and mitigating traffic issues.
So it's 100% of the revenues are going in that?
Go back into the park.
So that's good. And then in terms of the diversion to, of traffic potentially or the impact on the, on the western side, the no significant impacts, what I'm hearing, are there any impacts that should be understood?
Councilman Blumenfield, we didn't find any evidence that there would be diversion of traffic. I mean, I think the key finding there is, there is the evidence of improved management within the park, but the evidence that the technical traffic study that no increases in volumes would occur west of Western Canyon Road would argue pretty strongly against traffic being diverted from the park into Hollywood Land for sign viewing. So between the improved turnover of parking, improved transit access, low-cost transit, and the finding that traffic wouldn't be diverted in that direction, we didn't find there was any substantial evidence to find significant impacts.
Great. I'm going to, Mr. Rue speak, but I'd just, just say, I mean, I really appreciate that there's been so much work done on this by Mr. Rue, by Parks, by, by all of you. This is, you know, I'm always generally a fan of whenever we can take a very chaotic environment and provide more of a regulated environment for people to enjoy what is a citywide treasure, I'm all for it. And so I appreciate everything that's done, and I'll turn it to Mr. Rue.
And Mr. Rue, before you make your recommended action, I actually have a question, and that is, some of the speakers talked about the Dash lines and the reliability of public transit, which is an issue. More people will public, will take public transit when it is reliable, when they can count on within a very small window and exactly when the Dash lines will be waiting, when they'll be leaving, and keeping to a regular schedule. That will increase ridership and make this program successful. Without that regularity, it will fail. So when you talk about seven-day-a-week expansion, are we talking about regular set schedules that people can count on and find out through apps and online and printed materials so that we can really grow the awareness of exactly how people can enjoy Griffith Park in a reliable way? Because if we can land there, this will be very, very successful. If it's chaotic and unreliable, then that'll be a problem. So if you could talk a little bit about that?
The short answer is yes. There will be scheduled bus, a scheduled bus route that will be operating seven days a week. It'll operate pretty concurrent with the Griffith Observatory hours from roughly 11:00 a.m. in the morning until 10:30 p.m. every day, seven days a week, with extended service for the Greek Theater on show nights. We are working closely with our, our partners at LADOT. We have a marketing campaign we, that is going to be used on the bus, kind of a PSA in a sense, that will be shown, that will promote the park, promote the activities of the park, the observatory, different amenities that we have in the park. And it will be very consistent. We're, we're really shooting for a 15- to 20-minute wait time max, and we want to be able to provide that service seven days a week. And we feel that this is a good springboard to expand on our internal park shuttle program, which we hope to have free, that people could actually park in Travel Town or at the zoo and leave their car there if they wish, jump on the shuttle, and we'll give them a free ride to the front door of the Griffith Observatory. That's kind of our model. We're really pushing for that. MTA and LADOT have been great in helping us to put this together, and they've even installed some, I guess they're solar signs that now tell you exactly how long the wait time is, and we're putting those in as part of the route so people who are waiting will know exactly when the next bus is going to arrive.
So the goal is every 15 to 20 minutes during the hours of operation?
That's correct.
Councilmember, I'd like to note that the 15- to 20-minute window, as you're probably familiar, is the sweet spot in terms of transit and effectuating a shift from auto to transit. It's that people don't want to wait, you have that kind of reliability. That's been demonstrated to have, have resulted in a major shift.
And when can we expect to have this with all of the expectations up and running?
So if, if all goes well today, we'll look at the March 21 kickoff date at this point. So that's what we're doing now.
Terrific. Thank you.
Hopefully we'll beat the spring break portion of the Observatory, which gets extremely crowded.
Sure. Mr. Rue, I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Councilman Blumenfield. Yes, this is an unprecedented effort with all the city departments, led by Recreation and Parks, and of course, our partners at Dash and Metro and the community with lots of community input. And, and thank you so much for hearing this item today. And this is about the quality of life of residents in the fourth district and for all users of Griffith Park citywide. As one of the largest urban municipal parks in the United States, Griffith Park is the crown jewel of our city's park system, but it's being loved to death. This proposed plan is a good first step to improving public safety and decreasing overall traffic to Griffith Park and near the Hollywood sign. The routing of these roads above the Observatory will improve traffic flow and access for emergency vehicles. The increased coordination with Dash Services and Metro will encourage park visitors to take alternative forms of transportation. This proposed plan at Griffith Park needs to happen and must go forward. This is a piece of a much larger strategy that seeks to improve the overall traffic flow, increase public transit options, decrease the number of cars in our parks, and ultimately provide safeguards for negatively impacted communities. My office has been working on many measures to relieve, to provide relief and safeguards to addressing the impacts of, of use by tourists and residents and affect the neighborhoods around the park and near the Hollywood sign. We've also been working with many partners, including the Ford Theater, to provide options for additional viewing points, which will reduce the traffic to the residential areas. I've also introduced legislation to study the feasibility of establishing and staffed, establishing staffed visitor centers throughout the city and to identify opportunities to raise additional revenues from tourism-related sources to support the increased enforcement, infrastructure, and public safety measures. This plan is part of a larger strategy that will increase access to our parks and enhance the quality of life for residents and visitors. Today, I want to express my full support for the department's recommendations before us today and move this item forward to City Council. I want to thank the Department of Recreation and Parks for their efforts on this plan, and I also want to thank the many residents who provided their input throughout this process, even those who disagree with this action, action plan. I will continue to work collaboratively towards comprehensive results to make our city a better place for wildlife, residents, and visitors alike. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You bet. So, so Mr. Rue, we are, you're recommending that we adopt the recommendations from the November 21, 2016 Department of Recreation and Parks report denying the appeal of the initial study mitigated negative dec, case number NG15539RP. Is that correct?
Yes.
Without objection, that shall be the order.
And, and may I just step in? There were three recommendations for that recommend, Park Board, deny the sequel appeals, concur in the board's decision, and direct the department to file a notice of determination regarding this matter. Is that all three recommendations that you're?
Yes, I agree. I hope so.
Thank you.
And seeing as there are no objections, then that, that will be the order. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everyone, for coming to City Hall to testify on this matter, too. Thank you. All right, and that brings us to item number two, Mr. Sutton Willis.
Item number two, chief legislative analyst and city administrative officer, joint report and Bureau of Engineering report relative to the acquisition of the Taylor Yard G2 parcel located 2.5 miles northeast of downtown Los Angeles. There's further disclaimer information if we need to go into closed session, sir.
If we need to.
If we need to. All right, thank you. And before we have the presentation, I'm going to start with a public comment, actually. I'd like to, to do public comment first. All right. So, beginning with public comment, we have, I think Mr. Splindler is no longer in the room. Are you here? So, Mr. Splindler, we'll start with you. And you'll have one minute.
Oh, boy, no quorum. See, Mr. City Attorney?
We should be running. We're starting.
We don't have a quorum, do we? See, there's only two people in the chairs. So, thank you for breaking the Brown Act. Yes. Oh, David Rue. Okay, we're three. So, today is this illegal cleanup and dumping ground. So today, we call dumping grounds parks, just like we call feminism, Nazism, just like we call names of everything else in life. So, of course, this is a complete theft of city funds, and of course, it will be investigated by the FBI, but nobody here cares. Well, Mr. Rue, he cares, but these other two, yeah, even you, Bob. So I'm going to insist that the two honest ones vote no, because we can't afford to clean this up to, to a park, because in the sale price, it doesn't include that proper cleanup. Vote no on this stealing bullshit.
Okay, we have Shona Ganguly, Michael Drennan, and Manissa Christensen will be our, our next three speakers.
I'm Shona Ganguly from the Nature Conservancy. We're an international conservation organization and have been working at the LA River for the last couple of years on habitat enhancement, and we support moving forward with the acquisition of G2 and reclaiming the floodplain and adding more habitat to the river.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Drennan. I'm the director of watershed management at WSP Parsons Brinckerhoff, but I also have the pleasure of serving as the chair of the board of the Council for Watershed Health, which is a local nonprofit that dedicated to watershed health and represents business and academia, government, and water agencies, as well as just environmental groups. And we're very supportive of the city's action here. Want to commend you for your leadership. It's a very exciting moment, and thank you for voting yes on this measured action to acquire parcel G2.
Thank you.
Hi there. Good afternoon. I'm Marissa Christensen, executive director of Friends for the Los Angeles River. It's a very exciting moment to be here today. It's been decades in the making, and it was only just a few months ago that you adopted Alternative 20 and Arbor as the, the vision for this parcel. So to be here today with you making the decision to actually purchase the land is, is very exciting. I'm sure I don't have to tell you how important it is to our organization and the vision for an ecologically restored LA River. So I'm just here to offer you my support, our support, the river community's support, but also to ensure you that we're going to continue to be here as your partners in identifying and securing the funding to actually make implementation a reality. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next three speakers, Ida Talala, Brian Baldoff, might be Baldar, I apologize, and Paolo Peroni.
Good afternoon. My name is Ida Talala, and I'm the founder coordinator of EcoPark Gathering of Elders and Caregivers. This particular group has always been supportive of the area parks as well as libraries. And while we haven't had a meeting recently, I am sure they would support the acquisition of land, and we ask that additions of parks are longs to the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ida.
Hi, Brian Baldoff. I'm with the Mounds Recreation and Conservation Authority. We're a joint powers authority of the Santa Monica Mounds Conservancy. We, we wholly support the acquisition of this parcel. The Conservancy and MRCA have been working on river projects for a very long time. We hope to continue. We, we want to partner with you on this project and on others, and so we fully support this acquisition.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Paolo Peroni with the Trust for Public Land, and we've been working on acquiring properties along the LA River for the better part of 20 years and, and have made runs at this one before, unsuccessfully, obviously. So I'm here just to voice our full support of this project and, and support of all actions necessary to acquire this parcel. You know, in my career in conservation, there are catalyst deals, and I think this is one of them. I think it goes without saying that acquisition of this parcel will have ripple effects up and down the river and, and will catalyze the efforts of acquisition and restoration beyond this site. So again, you know, from myself and from the Trust for Public Land, we fully support all actions needed going forward here. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker will be Herman, Armando Herman, I believe it is, followed by Justin Yee and John Sitaki, I believe it is. Did I get that right or did I butcher it?
Swetolski.
Oh, Swetolski. My reading isn't much better. All right, let the clock begin.
Okay, fool. When I came in, I submitted a card for the record on item number one, which I oppose with all.
And this is not speaking to the agenda, I And this is not speaking to the agenda item. We're on item two.
That's right. Now, going on item number two, because I only got one fucking minute under the rough and brown act.
And again, he's not speaking to the agenda item.
What do you mean? I'm talking about trash, fool. I'm talking about trash, fool. Aren't you the?
And this is not on the agenda item.
What do you mean it's not? People here were talking about the trash.
Agenda item two.
Two.
It's agenda item two.
What, we're talking about two?
You're not, but that's what the agenda item is.
No, no, I'm staying on topic. You said stick on two. I stuck on stupid two. You see, I'm on two.
If the speaker doesn't want to speak to the agenda item, he should force it his time.
Hey, I'm just a puppy like you. I'm on topic.
I think the speaker doesn't understand the agenda item.
No, I do not understand it. I'm a puppy. I'm a little bear.
So, you may, you may exit.
Okay, sit down.
You're not going to speak on the item.
Now, what he's trying to say, bitch, is that he opposes and he's against it. For the record, Mr. Herman, get it, bonehead?
Always someone to elevate the conversation. All right, so we have Justin Yi, and John, and I have your last name wrong, and Karen Flores.
Good afternoon. My name is Justin Yi. I'm representing the National Park Service and U.S. Forest Service. I'm Urban Waters Federal Partnership Ambassador for the LA River. The G2 parcel is a keystone parcel for Army Corps of Engineers LA River Restoration, Ecosystem Restoration Project, and that project is a keystone project for the rest of the remaining stretches of the LA River. So, the acquisition of G2 is a great first step towards access for recreation and green space and improving ecosystem function. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. John Swetolski, River LA, and I just want to echo what the previous advocates said. River LA believes this is a real historic and unique opportunity to provide open public space restoration in an area of the city that sorely needs it. You know, as our region continues to advance the cause of the transformation of the Los Angeles River, we believe this is a real integral part and continues as a catalyst and provides momentum for that historic effort, and we urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Flores.
Hi, everyone. My name is Karen Flores. I'm an independent river advocate, and I wholeheartedly support the purchase of Taylor Yard G2. This is going to provide wildlife habitat, public health, and equitable access to the river. Thank you very much. We all know this is a long journey to this purchase. Thanks.
Thank you. And that is the last speaker on this item. And before I invite, I believe I have Mathias Farfan from the Office of CLA, Jaclyn Wagner, CAO's office, and Deborah Weintraub from Bureau of Engineering, but I think Karen, okay, Katie, all right. Please, please make your way forward for the presentation. And let me just say that, you know, this is a very bold step forward, and looks, do we need another chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we need another chair if there is one.
I think we have one more for my desk.
All right. As we prepare for this presentation, colleagues, we're taking a very bold step forward. Taylor Yard G2 is the largest and only piece of LA River parcel along the stretch of the Revitalization Master Plan with a willing seller. This hasn't happened, and I can't even remember when. So, our work in this committee can give the council as a whole the confidence that this is not only the right thing to do in terms of moving forward with this purchase, but it is a once, not just an ad generation, but a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the city. As I mentioned, it's unheard of to have a parcel of this size that we can acquire next to the river for habitat restoration, for public use, riparian habitat restoration, revitalization efforts, you name it. And in order to do anything along the river, we must control the property in order to do that. Otherwise, we're just enjoying these beautiful concepts that we've come up with over the decades, and they look good in a frame on a wall. Well, this gives us an opportunity to actually acquire the property and make something real happen, which I think we're all vested in after these many, many years of all the work and blood, sweat, and tears and money that has gone into planning for river improvements. And if we don't move on this opportunity, the real estate value will only increase, as will the sales price. So, it's a very exciting prospect that we are really on the brink of, and I look forward to hearing the latest on where we are with the escrow and what the next steps will be. So, with that, please, please begin.
Okay. Good afternoon, committee members. Mathias Farfan with the Office of the CLA. Again, before you is a joint CLA/CAO report regarding the acquisition of Taylor Yard G2. On October 26th of 2016, the Council Mayor authorized city staff to open escrow for the acquisition of Taylor Yard G2. City staff went ahead and opened escrow on October 31st with a $100,000 deposit that was borrowed from the reserve fund. That triggered a 120-day escrow period. The first 90 days were for a feasibility review period, at the end of which the city would need to notify the escrow company and Union Pacific whether or not we were going to close escrow within the final 30 days. That's quickly approaching. That's this coming Monday, and if the city does not notify the escrow company by then, it's deemed that the city does not want to purchase Taylor Yard G2, and our deposit would be returned. So, we came back, we are also instructed by this committee back in October to report back within 45 days with an update. We did provide that update in November, and at that time, we did notify the committee that we'd be coming back in January with the final report after our feasibility review was completed. We have completed the feasibility review. That's included in the report before you. It includes several attachments. It also includes two options. Option one includes the council actions that would need to be taken in order to acquire Taylor Yard G2. Option two are the council actions that would be taken to not acquire Taylor Yard G2. And I'd just like to thank, you know, city staff that are here, I mean, city attorney, Bureau of Engineering, of course, CAO staff, you know, and the Petroleum Administrator were very instrumental in completing each portion that was assigned to them as part of the feasibility review period, and those are included as attachments to this report. It includes four attachments. Attachment one is the addendum to the LA River Ecosystem Restoration Project, IFR, EISEIR, that council adopted back in June of 2016. And attachment two details of the funding that would be needed by fiscal year to perform the layer project on Taylor Yard G2. That's breakout of the 252 million. I'd just like to state that's just rough estimates, because we were asked to report back on that. Attachment three is a report from the Petroleum Administrator regarding the pipelines that run through Taylor Yard and also the ones that are adjacent to Taylor Yard, what their condition are. And attachment four is the BOE report regarding potential interim uses of G2. I'd just like to state our report includes a report that stated January 5th, 2012, Bureau of Engineering subsequently submitted a revised report that stated January 12th. That's also part of the council, this council item. And within the report, it also includes a report back or summary from the city attorney who reviewed the operators within the easement areas that are running through Taylor Yard G2. That said, city staff are here to answer any questions you may have. As indicated, or, well, I didn't indicate, under option one, if the city does proceed with the acquisition of Taylor Yard, it would require the authorization of $60 million in MICLA to acquire the property. We are still in talks with the state on potential state grant funds for this property, of which 20 million, if they, if we do get those funds, would be used to offset that six, you know, a portion of that 60 million in MICLA. Again, that said, city staff are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anyone to add to that? No? Mathias, if you could just, I know one of the great unknowns was the whole petroleum issue.
Yeah.
So, if you could, we didn't find any sort of red flags that said this is, this is bad, this is not good. Can you just describe that process in brief in terms of what we were concerned we might find and what it is we did find that gives you a sense of confidence that we're comfortable moving forward with the purchase?
Well, there is a petroleum line that currently runs through the, I guess, would be the eastern, the eastern boundary of the property. It runs adjacent to the rail. The pipeline is regulated by the state. We did, that was our Petroleum Administrator with city attorney did reach out. We were able to get a letter from the state fire marshal regarding the testing that's been done on that pipeline. State law requires that it be tested at minimum every five years. I believe that that pipeline was tested two years ago, and that nothing was found abnormally wrong with it. The report also states the age of the pipe. So, at this point, we have no reason to believe that that pipe poses any public safety risk.
Okay. And just a few questions that I, that I have. Thank you for answering that, and that is, you talk about a contingency figure of $33 million. How is, how does BOE determine that contingency figure? It's in, I think it's found in Table 1.
Yes, I'll just give a quick summary of that, and BOE could add in, but there is, and that's part of the $252 million estimate for the project on Taylor Yard G2. That includes the acquisition of the property, remediation of the soil, and then also the actual implementation of the Army Corps project on Taylor Yard G2. And BOE did include an escalator as part of their dollar. They calculated how much it would cost in today's dollars, and then they included an escalator to that, that price, because it, you know, would occur over years. And on top of that, they included a contingency, but I don't know if BOE would want to add anything regarding how that was, was done.
Hi, Katie Doherty with the Bureau of Engineering. That was pretty accurate.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that explains it. So, it's really, just to, just to draw the distinction like we have many times in this committee, moving forward with the acquisition is not, we, we want the project eventually, but this does not require us by moving forward with the purchase of building a 250 million, 252 million dollar project. This is simply the purchase of the property, eyes wide open, not knowing what we're getting into in terms of, we know that there are soil remediation concerns that have to be dealt with eventually. We know that we have very specific goals for the Revitalization Master Plan that include G2, but we are not legally bound by moving forward with the purchase to build the project. Just, I want to make that distinction very clear. We all have goals for the river, but one thing at a time, and I think there could be, well, there has been confusion over that since we've been talking about acquiring this parcel. This is simply moving forward and striking while the iron is hot, and it's for sale, and we've, we locked in a sales price last year that, that the seller is, will honor based on the escrow evaluations.
That is correct. Today, the purpose for acquiring Taylor Yard today would be for the Army Corps Arbor project, but there are various mayor/council approvals that do need to occur in the future in order for that project to be realized, at which point, at any point along that process, if something changes, then of course, something can always change, but, but immediately, there would be the design agreements between the city and the Army Corps that would be coming forward, and, you know, I would hope within the next three to six months, and council would review those and have to approve those after the design agreements are, are executed, then, and the designs come back to council with an actual project that has specifics, and the actual cost of the project is known, then you would actually then have the documents that would come before mayor and council that would actually commit the property to that project. And at that time is when the city would have to decide whether or not it benefits the city or not to do the project, depending on what the cost sharing is between the Army Corps and the city and other, other points within that agreement.
That explains it well, and then throw in appropriations from Congress in coming years.
Yes.
And things are a little uncertain at the moment with that, but, but the point is, acquisition, that's the number one goal, and without that, we'll have nothing to really work with in terms of our ultimate goals, and that's, that's the point that I wanted to make. In terms of, are there any, with this, moving forward with this purchase, are there any other proposed changes to any easement agreements on the side, or does that all come later when we talk about the possible state reimbursement of MICLA? Or is there anything to discuss there at this time?
One of the, one of the recommendations under option one would be to instruct city staff to continue our negotiations with the state regarding those state grant funds, and if there is an agreement that is, that we come to, then that would need to come back to council for review, and that can take many forms. We're still in discussions with them, so, you know, that would be a separate item at that point, where perhaps we, we would come back to committee or council, would perhaps go into closed session to discuss what the negotiating points are on that, that particular agreement.
Right. We want more partners from the state and the federal level in this, you know, effort moving forward, and then those details will be negotiated moving forward with what exactly that support means.
Yes.
Terrific. Thank you. Colleagues, questions? Mr. Bloomingfield.
Just following up on that. So, in terms of the negotiations with the state, if that doesn't happen, then, then our purchase price, or for the land is 60 million versus 40 million, the cost to the Los Angeles taxpayer.
That is correct. The report does include a chart that includes potential funding sources for the project, and, you know, CAO could speak better, but I, but I believe it identifies up to $160 million in funding, of which 25 million is that, that state grant funding. But there are other funding sources we could seek, but that would all be part of the whole process of.
And so, the other 135 million that you're talking about, besides the 25, is money that would go into the actual project itself, not the acquisition?
Correct. That would be potential funding, and they're listed in the report, and you can see what they are, but, but the city would need to actively seek those funds. Of course, we need to come back to council and to get approval on those if they materialize.
And then, the other thing, we were talking about the different decision points. When the remediate, when we actually get a better number on the remediation, which I assume will be within the next year, that'll be another decision point in terms of, you know, moving forward, because as I understand it, but correct me if I'm wrong, we're acquiring it for this great park purpose. If, for some reason, people's worst fears are realized, and the remediation is much worse than we anticipated and not making it less suitable for park purposes, then we would have the option at that point to, to sell off that land for, to, to reacquire. I hope that doesn't happen. I'm obviously pushing for the park project, but to sort of give people who are concerned about that some measure of reassurance, you know, at what point in the process do we preclude that option?
Well, upon acquiring the property, if the city decides to acquire the property, we would need to sit down with the state and negotiate an agreement with them regarding the remediation of the property.
Right.
Bureau of Engineering has had initial discussions with the state DTSC. They are open to the idea of phasing in the remediation of Taylor Yard G2. So, we could phase it in sections. BOE's report does speak to that. So, at that point, there are, there are many options when it comes to that. Of course, we would be coming back to council, you know, regarding those plans as they come forward. Again, of the, of the acquisition, the, you know, the acquisition costs are 59.3 million, of which 14.7 million would be set aside in a remediation escrow account. So, if the city were to phase the cleanup of Taylor Yard G2, if the state were to sign off on specific sections of Taylor Yard G2 as being clean, we would be able to draw down funds from that remediation escrow account to reimburse the city for those costs.
Reimburse the city from the 60 million?
14.7 million.
14.7 million is, of that acquisition cost is remediation cost?
Yes.
Which obviously, we're going to spend at least that much.
Yes. That 14.7 million represents, if we were to clean up the property to industrial standards, if we were to, because currently, the property is owned for industrial use.
Right. And that's the estimate. So, do we have a final report from DTSC?
No, that, that wouldn't occur until after we, we acquire the property, if we acquire the property.
Oh, that's, that's true, yeah. The, the current. The, the current owner, Union Pacific, has an approved remedial action plan to remediate the site to industrial use. So that's what, I guess we would technically be working under now. However, since that's not our ultimate goal, we have initiated talks with them to see what we need to be done to either revise that remedial action plan or, or create a new one.
And that's where the 14.7, or whatever you said it was, comes in to play. So as we, as we learn about it more, if it becomes this outrageous number, we at least have that backstop of a, of a remediation plan to industrial zone, which is 14.7 million, and then we're left with the acquisition price and, and this property being worth probably market value, but it's probably worth more by now. But at the end of the day, our goal is to get a remediation plan that's manageable under the big project.
And I was going to say, and that's consistent with the secret document that we have.
So I want to address the funding a little bit. The reason that we're requesting commercial paper is to give you that flexibility. It's short-term debt, so it rolls until you decide what you're doing with that property. If for some horrible reason you discover something that you don't like, and you decide to sell the property, the funding mechanism that we're using would allow you to pay off the debt quickly and be able to do it. So because you're still unsure of what you're doing, that's where we're using the shorter-term funding.
So at some point, do we, do we refinance that debt?
Yes.
Into...
Into long-term debt. We can't do that until you remediate the property.
Right. So that's another key distinction. So we're, we're commercial paper, and how long does a commercial paper last?
For as long as you want. We're hoping no more than five years, but, you know, I've heard three years. It really depends on how quickly you can remediate to the industrial level, and at that point, we'd refund it into longer-term debt. But the being commercial paper gives you the flexibility that if something does go, like you said, we hope not, wrong, you don't have to worry about paying back your debt quickly.
Right, but it's at a variable rate?
It's variable, but it's still below 1%.
Wow. Still below 1%?
Yeah, we're seeing, yeah, it's about between 0.6 and 0.9.
Essentially free money to park it, in a sense.
For now, yeah.
That's, that's great. Okay.
Terrific. Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no questions, but I just really wanted to thank you for your many, many years of leadership on this issue, and also really want to thank Recreation and Parks, the CLA, CAO, city attorney, GST, and all the many other various departments involved for bringing this, bringing us to this point. And I also really want to thank the Friends of the Los Angeles River and River LA for this vision and follow-through for this endeavor. And I, and I have had, and I still continue to have, some concerns over the price tag of this project over time, especially considering that it is a 245 million, especially considering that we do have a $245 million deficit that we're facing this year. However, the excellent work of staff has convinced me that the purchase of this parcel itself is a good investment for the city and taxpayers, and, and I've met, and as the, the people before us I've met on several occasions. And I just want to say, as we move forward, I look forward to working with staff on improving this parcel in a fiscally responsible way for our city, and also want to make sure that the valley receives our appropriate focus for the next addition of green space. And Council District Four has financially supported, and I know Bob has as well, the River Bike Way project throughout the valley, which is a great start, but actual green space needs to be next. And I am very excited to move this project forward today, and I look forward to casting my eye vote and working with everyone here on the LA River Vision Project, and, and thank you, Councilman O'Farrell, for your leadership on this.
Thank you, Mr. Rue, for, for expressing that sentiment. I very, very much appreciate that, but I just got to tell you that, so, we, Bob and I've been in office for three years and nearly seven months, year, year and a half now, and some change.
You've been in it a decade.
Well, yeah, over a decade, which, which gives me the context to say what I'm about to say, and that is that it really does take consistent focus, right? So we know that back in the eighties, Lewis McAdams had this dream and cobbled together a bunch of supporters and advocates, and this revitalization goal for the river was born, right? When some were suggesting that we turn the channel into a freeway, a freeway, I mean, seriously. That was in the eighties. So then the intrepid core of river supporters marched forward all those years, and then our predecessor in chairing this committee, the then ad hoc river committee, Ed Reyes, really powered this forward. Now, Taylor Yard is within Council District One, and our colleague Gil Sadio will, will help guide the future along with us on, on that, but I got to hand it to Ed Reyes. This was a goal of his forever, and Union Pacific was never willing to sell. And the, the seeds of the River Revitalization Master Plan were born back in the summer of 2002, and five years later, it got adopted. And so this has always been a prize that everyone has eyed in terms of acquiring it so that it could play that critical role that it is meant to play in revitalizing the river. And now, we get to work with Mr. Sadio and all together on how that will materialize over there in Taylor Yard. But this will give us exactly what we need to work with. This will give us an opportunity to have a successful project at the river that more and more people will continue believing in. This will give us an opportunity of additional funding to go for, like my, our enhanced infrastructure financing district, which we're getting off the ground, which monies can go towards soil remediation, remediation of contaminated sites. So we're constantly looking for our, for partners, the state and federal level. We're constantly looking and exploring local solutions for our challenges here in Los Angeles, and we're constantly keeping in mind global climate change as we move forward with what we can do right here in LA to combat that in our open spaces. And so there's a lot going on with just this simple purchase and supporting that purchase, but it is within, it is a huge part of the overall context of the future of the Los Angeles River, which potentially has benefits for the 31-plus mile throughout the city, well into the valley, all the way to Canoga Park where the river begins. So this approval today is very, very important, and we hope to have the full support of our colleagues when it comes to council, I believe, on Friday. And I want to thank everyone involved in the last 30 years for, on these river efforts, both city family and our river advocates who always nudge this along and keep it front and center for all of us on how important this is and how we have a, we need to have a sense of urgency to take advantage of these resources when they make themselves available. And that's what this is all about. So I thank all of you for that, and here are my recommendations. Approve the CLA and CAO recommendations from the report dated January 13th, 2017, to proceed with the purchase of Taylor Yard G2, option one. Two, receive and file the BOE report dated January 5th, 2017. And number three, note and file the BOE report dated January 12th, 2017. Without objection, that shall be the order. Seeing as there are no objection, option one is adopted, we shall proceed to the full council, supporting the purchase of Taylor Yard G2. And I believe that completes our special agenda item on Arts, Parks, and LA River. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.